I wonder if he can call the Bloomington City Council meeting to order? I wonder if everybody will, I'll wait for just a second here, all the women's turns get up. I wonder if everyone will stand for the pledge and please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Fruin.
Here.
Alderman Lauer.
Here.
Alderman Sage.
Here.
Alderman Millamway.
Here.
Alderman Sterns.
Here.
Alderman McDade.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Fazini.
Here.
Here.
This is not working as God intended. We're not able to turn our light on.
Okay, you can't, uh, Scott, oh, maybe he's, he's probably still working out our technical difficulties. At this point, we have, uh, we, we may have some technical difficulties here. Let me see if I try it. No, it's not letting me do the other one. So hopefully, we will have mics shortly. But in the meantime, let's, we have public commentary, and I don't know whether or not these mics are working. First, I have Alton Franklin. Alton, would you like to come forward? We have two people. And again, just so everyone knows, the public comments are limited to approximately three minutes. Alton.
My name is Alton Franklin. I live at 508 Patterson Drive here in Bloomington, Illinois. One quick thing, um, one of the principles of leadership that I learned when I was in service is, uh, we criticize in private and we praise in public. Unfortunately, there are times where I say things which I wish I could, just, but I can't get all of you together. So there are times where I hope you don't believe that I'm coming at you to be offensive. I just want to let you know where I see room for improvement, although I'm not the most, uh, soft-voiced person. Uh, but moving on from that, uh, the other thing is, is that you praise in public. And I would like to commend each and every one of you because I'm starting to see some real growth, and that tickles me to no end. Uh, one thing I'd like to help out with is another little piece of education that I received in leadership when I was in the military. We had a little thing known as the, uh, the, uh, five paragraph order. Uh, it's got an acronym, of course, being military, so it's SMEAC. It's S-M-E-A-C. And that stands for Situation, Mission, Execution, Admin and Logistics, Command and Signal. And it boils down pretty easy. Situation, what the heck's going on? What's bad that we need to fix, or what's good that we can build on? Mission, how are we going to go about doing that? What is it that we have to do? What is our stated objective, and let's make it clear and definitive, a SMART goal, if you will? Execution, let's do it. There comes a point where you gotta fish or cut bait. Uh, I'm not much of a fan of visioning processes myself. Uh, we have a couple of things in IT that I feel, that I feel irrelevant. Moore's Law says that every eighteen months, the number of processors in a, in a CPU is gonna double. There's a lesser-known one known as Mule's theorem, which is, in eighteen months, half of what you know is not gonna be there. It's gonna be absolutely useless. Coming back to SMEAC, admin and logistics, what is it gonna take to do this? How do we acquire the resources? How do we put 'em in place, and how are they used? Command and signal, who's in charge? How do we go about measuring as we go through the process? What needs to happen to make this better or to complete an optimal happy path project? Command, excuse me, admin logistics, command and signal. I think I got a couple of things messed up there. Admin logistics is about resources. Command and signal is, it gets into what are our markers? How do we communicate with success? How do we determine that we have deficiencies? Where can we build on something that's turning out to be much better? And in virtually every aspect of my military career, I leaned heavily on SMEAC. Because it's real easy to go, what do I need to do? What am I going to do? What is it gonna take for me to get moving? And all the way through, it just helps me to stay on track and to get things done and not get off into analysis paralysis is another term. When I was, when I was a mental health counselor working against substance abuse, it's one of the things that, uh, when we get off on tracks and we're concerned about how others are gonna think about us, and we lose sight of the goal because we're more concerned about what is gonna be perceived. I'm a mission-oriented person. I would like to thank you for your efforts to this point, and I really do hope to see a lot more of what I've seen, and it does look like it's growing. Thank you.
Thank you, Alton. Ron Schulz?
I agree with Alton quite a bit on what he has to say.
Just for the record, if you could, we know you, but could you state your name and address again?
Ron Schulz, 1208 East Oakland.
Thank you.
Uh, I pretty much agree with what Alton has to say, but I also think that, um, uh, I, I, I feel it's my responsibility at this point in time to point out that, uh, every other Friday, or every Friday before the city council meeting, we have a, uh, a open meeting, uh, kind of like a town hall meeting, and, uh, these are greatly appreciated. Anybody can come, and that's why I'm up here tonight to remind people. Uh, I, I've been to three out of five. Uh, I would've liked to have come to the other two, but there was a problem. Uh, but I feel that at these meetings, the mayor actually gets the pulse of the community. And the people that are there really appreciate being able to speak their mind, bring up topics that they might not be able to bring up, maybe topics that don't even make it to the city council, uh, regularly. Some of the things we've talked about are noise ordinances, dogs and, uh, animal ordinances, east side highway, next year's budget, last year's budget, every budget. Uh, the condition of World War I artifacts at Miller Park, the area, the area economy, and what makes it run and what, what needs to be done, pensions, streets, and, and many other things that I don't even have listed here. But one of the things I noticed is the people are very orderly, very civil. There's some, um, very meaningful conversations. I see such people as Judy Stern so far, uh, Karen Schmidt, uh, Scott Black, Three Aldermen, and I really appreciate them being there, uh, as well as Mr. Hales, Barb Atkins, and, uh, other staff. It's, it's a great opportunity, and that's what I'm up here to do, is remind people that I appreciate it, and I think that they could get a lot off their minds, they can, uh, feel better about the city. And, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. I really appreciate what you've done.
Thanks, Ron. You've actually taken some of my comments from my mayoral remarks, so, thank you. You made that much easier. And in terms of, uh, recognition or appointments, we have a presentation by Christine Randall, Illinois State University graduate student on homelessness in Bloomington. Christine, you wanna come forward, and you do have ten minutes?
Um, I'm actually joined by the rest of my group. We have Barbie Price, Stacy Rudd, uh, Courtney Teeman, Tim Mast, and Brant Trumby.
Thank you.
Um, first of all, I just want to say thank you. I don't know if Bobby Kearns is here, but he was kind of the coordinator of communicating with you guys for us to come tonight. Um, and thank you to all of you for allowing us to take up some of your time. Um, as you stated, we are Illinois State graduate students in the Teaching and Learning Graduate Program, formerly known as Curriculum and Instruction. Um, we all teach at different districts representing sixth through twelfth grade. Um, and on the back, if you want to pay attention to this slide, our purpose, um, there's two points. The first one is to develop, was to develop and conduct interviews of two underrepresented populations in the community. Um, the second part was to create a plan of action. And so we felt, felt that coming to you guys tonight would be part of our plan of action to promote awareness of homelessness and low-income poverty in the community. The two organizations that we got time to spend with was Habitat for Humanity and Project Oz, and we interviewed some of the leaders of those organizations. So tonight, we're gonna present to you, um, our information, our findings from our interview, and then as well, share with you our plan of action as to promote awareness as educators as well as community members. Um, the first organization that we interviewed was Habitat for Humanity. Um, this is an international nonprofit Christian organization that provides affordable and safe housing for the working poor. They also perform repairs on existing homes in the community. Uh, it was founded in McLean County in nineteen eighty-five and continues to provide services within our community today. Uh, the other organization our group interviewed was Project Oz, which also was founded in nineteen eighty-five. Uh, Project Oz is a nonprofit agency in Bloomington that serves McLean County. They focus on preventing drug abuse, empowering youth and young adults. They assist the homeless and runaway youth, and help teens stay in school. Uh, programs include street outreach, transitional housing, maternity group homes, and multiple education programs for the youth. Uh, there are many strengths and weaknesses for each of these programs. Habitat for Humanity, um, has many strengths in regards to servicing low-income families in Bloomington Normal. Uh, first, there's a lot of community involvement already, such as Women's Build and the ISU and IWU collegiate chapters of the organization. Specifically, the ISU and IWU chapters have built fifteen homes in fourteen years. Uh, they are one of the most active groups in the nation. Both Women's Build and the ISU and IWU chapters create opportunities for community members to get involved in the organization. Another strength involving volunteerism is the fact that the walls of homes are built by inmates of the Taylorville Correctional Facility. This gives inmates the opportunity to give back and gain skills that may be useful when they're released. Uh, while there are many strengths of the organization, there are some weaknesses. First, in order to receive a Habitat home, there is a loan process. Habitat finances homes with a zero percent loan. Because of this, Habitat relies on donations and fundraisers to keep the organization going. The economic downturn has hurt the organization because local and federal funding and grants have diminished. Another situation that hinders the organization's ability to service low-income families is the lack of certified contractors willing to donate time. While some do donate their time and skills, there are instances when this does not happen. Finally, while there is a lot of volunteerism already, Habitat can always use more.
Hi, and I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about some of the strengths through Project Oz.
If you could, uh, go to the, excuse me, could you speak in the microphone? Thank you.
Sorry about that.
No, that's fine.
Um, I'm gonna share with you all a little bit of the strengths from Project Oz. Um, first of all, I've been a member of this community for many years, and I see how much this community does when it comes to, um, involvement and volunteering. It's, it's excellent. Um, Project Oz, some of the strengths are, it is a program that is client-oriented. Um, they advocate, uh, specialists in McLean County, uh, the community involvement and volunteers. Uh, one thing about Project Oz that, um, is, is a wonderful thing is that their clients, they really work on forming that trust, to build that relationship with clients. Um, and also, too, many of you may not know, but Project Oz is one of the organizations in the area that actually put advocates throughout the schools of McLean County that, um, help work a little bit more with the at-risk, at-risk youth. Um, and like with anything, there's always gonna be some weaknesses. Um, for, even though they have a own-staff grant writer, there's always problems with funding. And one of the other things is just awareness of the programs that they offer.
Um, in terms of community outreach and awareness, Habitat for Humanity has a website that includes information for those needing homes and for those that would like to volunteer or donate. The organization also has partnerships with local churches, businesses, and community leaders. Habitat finds support and outreach from well-known members of the community or nation. However, despite the outreach and community awareness that Habitat already does, it is important to continue to spread the word about the organization through volunteerism and fundraising.
And Project Oz as well, they use a website. Um, they also are connected with a national program, which is, uh, SafeWatch program. Um, the caseworkers that work through Project Oz, they are really out there, um, visiting with the tent, uh, families and the homeless people. And also, just like with, just about every organization in McLean County, you know, the community partnerships with the different businesses, churches, and schools, uh, community leaders, and also the program referrals, uh, between the programs and organizations in McLean County.
So to summarize, our purpose in this presentation was not only to share the information that we collected from these group projects, but also to help promote awareness of these two organizations. Even though they do a nice job of providing support for the community, they themselves also need support from us. And so we're here to encourage volunteerism and providing other support to these organizations. And as educators, now, we can spread awareness in our own classrooms and start initiatives revolving around service learning. But as citizens, we need to participate in these community service events and donate time or resources to these organizations, so that way they can be successful in helping those in need. And so together, our humanitarian efforts can foster a continued partnership that allows to make, or allows to move forward and support our community as a whole. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks. Moving right along to the consent agenda. Are there any items that any member of the council would like to remove from the consent agenda? Older woman Sterns?
Thank you. Um, I'm sorry, I'm running, I have to double-check it. I believe it's seven C. I'm looking, looking for my, that's the one I had the question on. Oh, thanks, thanks, Jennifer.
Is it the rescind bid?
It's the rescind bid, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, so you'd like us to remove item seven C?
Yes, seven C. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, do I have a motion to approve of the consent agenda? Um, as amended, except for seven C?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Fruin. Is there a second?
I second it.
Second by Alderman Lauer. Okay, um, madam clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Fruin.
For both the consent and regular agenda, I do not have any personal or business interest in any of the listed items, nor have I received any financial benefits from any of the parties or organizations referenced in these specific agenda items, and I vote yes.
Alderman Lauer.
Yes.
Alderman Sage.
Yes.
Alderman Millamway.
Yes.
Alderman Sterns.
Aye.
Alderman McDade.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Black.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. Now, we'll move on to item seven C, rescind bid award for, uh, white and yellow high-durability latex traffic line paint. And I will turn to older woman Sterns since she pulled that.
Thank you, thank you. Um, the reason I pulled it was simply because of the question which I asked, and it is on page three of the agenda questions, if anyone wanted to look at it. Um, my question is not about the reason. I understand the storage, I understand the storage, um, capacity and, and how that helps the city. My confusion and concern was about the process. And the fact, okay, we couldn't, we originally accepted Sherwin-Williams' bid, and then we had to go with another bidder because of the storage issue. That I completely understand. What I don't understand is how we went about rescinding that bid. I'm talking about the process here, and how we notified Sherwin-Williams, and whether or not the original bid contained, um, the specifications about delivery. I'm just concerned about the, in general, rescinding a bid that had been awarded, and what was the process used. Thank you.
City manager Hales?
Well, first off, uh, you know, rescinding the bid is what we're bringing to the council tonight to approve. Uh, you'll basically, if you approve it, we'll rescind that original bid and shift to the other one, who is gonna be in full compliance. Uh, so that's, is there something I'm missing?
Well, right, here, here's the question. When the, the bid, and I, of course, I didn't see the specifics or the criteria, you know, or the, 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 um, qualifications, the bid qualifications. So I don't know. But was it communicated to the bidders that this storage issue had to be resolved? I mean, did they thoroughly understand that they had to have a storage facility in order to meet the bid?
Let me have Jim Karch come up here, but my understanding in reviewing information is that was specified. Now, whether or not, oftentimes, we run into situations where a bidder, uh, has all the information, whether or not they read it, understood it, or tried to fudge and maybe get my, you know, compliance here and there, that does happen. So, uh, Jim, anything else you might add on this situation?
Thank you, city manager Hales. Um, in answer to your question, this was one of an, an issue of confusion about Sherman Williams. Um, Sherman Williams was the people that had put in their bid. Uh, it was our understanding, this was typically the local Sherman Williams we'd be able to work with. Um, upon award from the city council, we contacted the local Sherman Williams, who said, "What? What, what is, what is this you're talking about? We have no idea." So it, it then, because of that process, came to understand that this was actually, um, their commercial franchise doesn't allow their local Sherman Williams to work with the larger commercial Sherman Williams. So they were then, understood we were not able to meet your bid, and said, "That's fine. We can't, we can't comply with that." And so it was not, is not an issue of a, "We're going to contest this." It was one of, okay. It was a confusion about who was able to provide what, what service. So it's not one that really caused an issue. They're not local, they're not able to provide the needs that we have.
Okay, and that does, that does help. The other, the other question I had, and, and I, I would imagine, by the way, that in the future, when we write that bid, we'll know that this eventuality could occur, and we'll clear that up initially, so people won't be bidding when they can't meet this local requirement. Is that?
Never seen anything like this one happen before with a local and a, you know, and we've all, oftentimes, you see a franchise in a certain area, but, uh, never seen one with a national firm that doesn't partner with the local firms, uh, at least through public works entities. But, but we will do our best to make sure that these kind of things don't happen again.
And the other question I had about the, there were four bidders. Um, are any of them local, pure local? I mean, I know Don Smith is, I believe, but what about?
Diamond Vogel is also a local company that we're, we have, we have worked with in the past successfully.
Owned and managed locally, is that right?
Were able to do it.
I was curious how that, but I, I do understand, and yes, I had never seen a rescind either, but now I think I see what happened. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Fruin.
Mayor, I would make a motion that we rescind the bid with, uh, Sherwin-Williams and award a new bid to Diamond Vogel.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Alderman Lauer. Any further discussion? Seeing none, madam clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Fruin.
Yes.
Alderman Lauer.
Yes.
Alderman Sage.
Yes.
Alderman Millamway.
Yes.
Alderman Sterns.
Aye.
Alderman McDade.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Black.
Yes.
Alderman Fazini.
Yes. All right, motion carries. We move on to item eight A, analysis of bids for repair of the Market Street garage. And we have allocated approximately ten minutes. If I could see who would like to speak, Alderman Fruin would like to speak. Anyone else like to address this issue? Okay, well, we'll start with Alderman Fruin.
Mayor, I would make a motion, unless you want me to defer to discussion first?
No, please, we can discuss that.
Then I would make that motion that the, uh, staff recommendation be accepted, and the motion be for the, uh, bid for Market Street Parking Garage be awarded to J. Jill and company the amount of four fourteen, three ninety-three.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Alderman Lauer. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, madam clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Fruin. Alderman Lauer.
Yes.
Alderman Sage.
Yes.
Alderman Millamway.
Yes.
Alderman Sterns.
Aye.
Alderman McDade.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Black.
Yes.
Alderman Fazini.
Yes. Okay, moving right along to item eight B, acceptance of Harwood Place street lighting study and recommendation to replace existing streetlights with new decorative lights. Budget approval and budget amendment. Uh, just, is there, we also budget about ten minutes for this. First of all, can I get a motion to approve?
Mayor, I would make the mo-
Actually, we have older woman Sterns, and then she had the light first, and then, uh, second by Alderman.
She's being warned for, um, I would like to make the motion that we accept this, um, eight, I'm sorry, eight B.
Eight B, correct, and then Alderman.
As written.
As written, and Alderman Fruin is a second. Uh, so we have about ten minutes. Who would like to speak on this, if I could get an idea? Alderman Fazini?
Yes, I'm curious what the cost of a standard light is and why we would have one neighborhood, uh, have a cost above that and not absorb the cost by the neighbors.
City manager Hales?
Uh, you know, that's a good question. In fact, uh, I think in, in one regards, uh, precedent was set that, uh, as part of the Locust Colton project, uh, similar type of decorative streetlight, uh, were, uh, put in on, on Country Club Place. Um, the lights we're putting in here are similar. Uh, we actually have very few areas around the city where we have something other than the standard, uh, light poles. Downtown is a good example, you know, very extensive decorative light poles, which are consistent with the character. I think in, uh, we did consider, and as in contained in this report, some cities that have, uh, much more extensive use of, uh, uh, more fancy lighting, you know, maybe a enhanced level of service, have created such things as special lighting districts. However, um, because we've only got a few, it just hasn't risen to the level of trying to move that along as maybe a, something significant for the city to consider at this point in time. I think furthermore, uh, this is a replacement. So at one time, the city did accept these streetlights, uh, to be narrowly spaced. Uh, you know, the quantity was greater, uh, so the city has always taken on more the responsibility to replace, uh, infrastructure, you know, after it has accepted those for purposes of perpetual maintenance. Uh, so those are, uh, I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Cost differential?
Let's see, I think, and Jim Karch, if you can help me, I think we tried to plug that in under the Hundred Year Plan Analysis, page eleven. Jim, kinda come and help point out that, uh, that difference in the cost between kind of our standard pole and what we're looking at here in this neighborhood.
Well, really, the, the city manager, as he was pointing out, is exactly right that, uh, there's a difference between what it would take to, to put in brand-new poles there or the overall cost of if we went just the utility company alone. Because that's, that's one of the key differences. If you look on page eleven, what it's talking about is a different summary of costs associated with systems to install. So for example, C1 and C2 on the table of summary of costs on page eleven would kind of highlight for you the difference of, instead of a, for example, uh, more of that, that recommended sixty-six thousand nine hundred, then you, you move over into the system installed, a hundred and thirteen thousand, or the ninety-four thousand five hundred. It's more in the range of the sixty, sixty thousand dollars, plus an ongoing monthly cost. So again, you've got the, the difference between, you know, the hundred thousand and more of the, the sixty thousand. Um, so again, regardless of what you do, you have to replace that infrastructure there. The infrastructure is, as it currently sits, cannot sustain what any, any system would be able to be replaced. So the difference is going to be those new poles provided, provided by the utility company versus the decorative pole that the city would more have to maintain. And so there's not just, it's, that's where the city manager was alluding to that life cycle cost. So there's the upfront cost, but then there's the ongoing cost. So that's where we have to take that into account. So the report tried to do that a little bit, both on table, uh, eleven, on page eleven, under the cost analysis. And then also, there was a life cycle analysis as well, further in the report, the city manager pointed out.
So, last question then. If, if a particular block in our city wanted to have these kinds of lights, but it didn't have special lights in the first place, it would not get them? Is that accurate?
I think certainly in new construction, uh, it, uh, if they wanted to provide an enhanced level of street lighting, we would look to- of street lighting, we would look to them to pay that differential cost. That would be a great, you know, project to actually put in a special service area or some special assessment area to have them in perpetuity, you know, kind of pay that differential.
So philosophically, we would charge a neighborhood the extra cost for special lights if it didn't already have special lights? Is that accurate?
I, yes, I'm trying to, I think I was thinking of something.
Am I making policy here?
We would certainly recommend, yeah, going forward, yeah, that they'd pay that differential cost.
I'm okay then, thank you.
In addition, the last point, there was one other table I was trying to find. On page 17 in the report, there also is the Hundred Year Plan Summary. That's ultimately, in addition to that initial cost difference, that life cycle cost is what I was trying to find. That's on page 17. You'll look at Plan Number Two. It's highlighted green on the left side. Cost amount above city standard utility street lighting for the 100-year period, as you project that out, and we ran these numbers through finance, would be $56,000. So that gives you a little bit better feel over that 100-year life cycle cost.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Alderwoman Sterns?
Just really quick, just a thank you and recognition to David Hales, Jim Karch, and all of the staff who has worked indeed very long and very hard on this project. This is about, it's about so many things, historic preservation, it's really about the ambiance of the entire Demet's Grove, East Grove Street, not Demet's, I'm sorry, Round Grove, Founder's Grove, Founder's Grove, East Grove Street. It's about the entire look and feel, the property values, the charm, the character, all the things that make Bloomington, and especially Founder's Grove, unique and really special. The historic lights on Country Club were certainly replaced and beautifully done, even if they do have signs on them that kind of really detract from them. That's another subject. But they were all replaced, and I assure you that the neighborhood, of course, you know, they looked at Country Club Place, and they said, "Wow." And indeed, it is beautiful. It got its new asphalt because so much of it was torn up, unlike Washington Street. They got its concrete patching. But anyway, it's been, it's been a huge project, and this is, this is one tiny, you know, part of it that adds more, I think, to the, a good feeling in a neighborhood. Any neighborhood could benefit. Neighborhoods, I think, want what they've had, at least, you know? They don't want something torn up or taken away or destroyed, and that's what this is about. So thank you to staff. I personally still feel, and I have to say this, that we could have possibly restored the old lighting. And I say that because I'm a history buff, and I've traveled so extensively through the historic cities, even in Indiana, and you just see rows and rows, a miles of gorgeous antique street lighting that works. But nevertheless, we're getting a really good thing here, and I appreciate it. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing, I think we've exceeded our time. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? A yes vote, of course, is in favor of this. Thank you.
Alderman Fruen.
Yes.
Alderman Lauer.
Yes.
Alderman Sage.
Yes.
Alderman Milamway.
Yes.
Alderman Sterns.
Aye.
Alderman McDade.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Black.
Yes.
Alderman Fazini.
Yes. Moving right along to item 8C, Customer Service Agreement with Central Illinois Regional Broadband Network, SURban. And do I, we have about 15 minutes devoted to this, or do we have a motion to approve item 8C?
Mayor, I would make the motion that the Customer Service Agreement with Central Illinois Regional Broadband Network be approved.
Moved by Alderman Fruen. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Alderman Lauer? Okay, thank you.
Our committee could...
Do we have any discussion? Alderwoman Sterns?
Just one quick question. Is there any backup to this system in terms of redundancy, any way to use, you know, in case of a situation where there's a problem?
Yeah, let's have Scott Sproles, our Information Services Director.
Sure, yeah. And thank you, counsel, and thank you, city manager. I want to quickly inform counsel that the SURban organization is well represented by folks in the back of the room. We have some very talented individuals in case there are questions that staff can't answer. But yes, the design of this network is a ring. So, you know, if there's a cut on one, in one part of that ring, then, you know, the network will kind of heal itself and communicate, you know, the opposite direction, if that helps to understand.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? A yes vote is in favor.
Alderman Fruen.
Yes.
Alderman Lauer.
Yes.
Alderman Sage.
Yes.
Alderman Milamway.
Yes.
Alderman Sterns.
Aye.
Aye. Alderman McDade.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Black.
Yes.
Alderman Fazini.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. We move on to item 8D, a related item, Central Illinois Regional Broadband Network Membership. And do we have a, in order to begin the purpose of discussion, do we have a motion to approve item 8D?
I'll move it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think Alderman Fruen had the first, okay. And then, is there a second? Then, oh, Alderman Scott Black is the second. And who would like to speak on this? Let's see, we've got one, two, three. If I could ask you to maybe target for about three or four minutes? I'll start with Alderman Lauer, and we'll go this way.
I'd just like to know what the projected costs on an annual basis over the income that is projected looks like, say, annual, maybe a five-year and a 10-year look at what our responsibility as a member may be. I know there's a lot, it's pretty intangible at this point, probably.
Let me first answer, our costs as a member or not as a member is what you just approved in the customer service agreement. Now, that's for the first year. What it may be in the future is yet to be determined, but certainly by being a member manager, we're certainly in the driver's seat, and we will be part of the process to help determine what those future costs will be, based on revenue projections, subscriptions, the cost of running the system, and how different they may be or similar to the first year. So that's just in brief. Let me, I do want to introduce our visitors here from ISU, and I'm going to maybe see if one of them may want to assist as we try to answer these questions. Let me first, I'm going to introduce, excuse me, Andrea Ballinger. Andrea is Associate Vice President for Administrative Technology and Chief Technology Officer for ISU, very involved in many of the meetings we've been having recently. Also, we have Lisa Houston. She's ISU's General Counsel. I hope I pronounced that right. Houston, okay. She's been doing a lot of the drafting, worked very closely with our corporate counsel. Todd Greenberg is on vacation tonight. We appreciate Lisa being here. We also have Scott DeJong. He's actually been the face of SURban. So if there's, I don't know, I would probably call him the project manager, project engineer. There's anyone who's kind of lived and breathed and slept, you know, thinking about SURban the last three, four years, it's probably been Scott. Then we had Fred Friedrich. Is that correct? He's kind of a special consultant to SURban, and it's been very interesting to hear from Fred on the experiences of many other jurisdictions around the nation who have been doing similar projects like this. So at this point in time, Andrea, just to follow up on Alderman Lauer's question, would you or someone like to just kind of follow up on that and then be available for other questions we might get on this operating agreement? So anything else you want to add to Alderman Lauer's question?
So the idea is for the boarding, the managing board, to actually decide what the future is going to look like. So right now, our projection for the revenues and expenses is on a very positive side. And we have been receiving a lot of requests from people that have not been engaged thus far. They want to jump in on this very high-speed network. So we have not decided that. So that's the answer to it. But right now, we do not foresee that that's going to happen, but the managing board members will actually decide that.
Other questions? Let's see, Alderwoman Sterns, and then Alderman Fazini. Oh, you didn't, Alderman Fazini.
Okay. Just clarification. This motion was made at the Administrative and Finance Committee, so it's been vetted at two different meetings. We're quite familiar with it. And I think one of the reasons that we recommended that it be moved forward to city council is it substantially, and I mean really substantially, increases the capacity that our city currently has. And I'm seeing Scott Schick has said, he was very instrumental in convincing our committee that, yes, we had to do this. And also being involved in, one we're voting on now, being involved in the leadership was significant. We want to be part of this. And so, just clarification.
Alderman, if I could, just, let's just have Andrea Ballinger just comment for the laymans. Just help everyone understand how huge this additional bandwidth is that SURban's going to provide all those who take service versus what we're used to right now.
Okay, if you go to the website, you're going to see two circles that we designed. One is like the size of a pushpin, okay? And the other one is one of these sewage, kind of a, you know, big pipes. That's the difference. Okay, in layman's terms, is that good enough?
Good.
I think it's crystal clear. I like how you talk.
Sewage, yes, the very big, we are in the city. They know what that looks like.
Well, you brought Public Works into this.
I did. It is a construction project, right? The network goes underground, so.
I think we've got a couple more questions. Alderman Fruen, and then Alderman Sage.
I think one of the beauties of this thing is, and help me remember when this initiative first started.
Four years ago?
2009.
2009.
So it has been a long journey, but you stayed with it. A lot of people have been involved with it, and it's good to see it getting plugged in. And it has been a huge improvement and need for the community, so thank you.
Thanks. Alderman Sage?
Yeah, just a quick observation, and I appreciate the reference to the fact that it was 2009. If I recall, part of the conversation we had at that, at that point, was to say, to not jump on board with this thing now is akin to saying, "I don't want to be near a Pony Express station. I don't want to be near the interstate when it comes by my house." And so it's nice to see this now come to fruition, and I appreciate the engagement of our own Scott Sproles as well. He's been instrumental in that, so thank you.
And I appreciate the historic analogy. Any other comments? Seeing none, Alder, excuse me, City Manager Hales?
Just want to echo what Alderman Fruen said. If it wasn't for ISU, this project would not have got off the ground and not have been completed. And the entire community owes a great debt to ISU, your personnel, and everyone involved to helping really move this project along. No, you know, other entity, I don't think, could have even tackled something so large. So I think thanks to ISU, your leadership in promoting this and seeing this through to completion, I think is something that we all need to recognize and compliment them on, so just wanted to add that as well.
Absolutely, thank you. Thanks. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? A yes is, of course, in favor of this.
Alderman Fruen.
Yes.
Alderman Lauer.
Yes.
Alderman Sage.
Yes.
Alderman Milamway.
Yes.
Alderman Sterns.
Aye.
Alderman McDade.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Black.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, moving right along. David, City Manager Report, discussion?
I just want to thank John Kennedy, the Parks and Recreation Department, all those, the police, firefighters, all those involved in the July 4th holiday. It was just spectacular. I know he's keeping his fingers crossed, because we went back to a former vendor on the fireworks, but I thought it was very great, you know, the best I've seen since I've been here. But I think our whole community very much enjoyed that holiday and all that was done on that very special day. A lot of work went into that, so thanks to John Kennedy and all your staff and the police and the firefighters as well.
I think we can give him a round of applause. It really was spectacular, and I got nothing, well, with one exception, somebody who didn't want any, us to spend any money at all on fireworks at the open house, but other than that, had nothing but praise. John, thank you very much. I'm sorry, David, you have more remarks?
That's all I have for tonight.
Well, actually, basically, David and Ron Scholz took away most of my comments in the mayor's section, but I actually do want to thank David Hales and Deputy City Manager Barb Atkins, who's, oh, yes, you are, you're in the back, for helping to attend the open house. We didn't have as robust a turnout as I'd like. I think we're about eight people, other than the members of the city council and staff. It'd be nice if we could have more people in the future, but the main thing is, is that it's consistent. And as I think Ron Scholz noted, we actually had interesting discussions, not just at this one, in every single meeting, except the one that I can attest to that I was not there. It was interesting. I heard it was torrential downpour, and there weren't many people here, but anyway, it's, even though people didn't always agree, of course, because we're humans, so we're not going to agree, there was a great deal of, I think, mutual respect, and we realized where our good points were, and even if we didn't always agree with that, "Yeah, well, you know, I understand where that person's coming from." And I think the whole idea of community dialogue with mutual respect is something that seems to be lost upon Washington and lost upon Springfield, but at least it's going to thrive here in Bloomington. So thank you very much. And in terms of Alderman, let's see, who do we have? Alderwoman Sterns, and then Alderman Lauer?
Just, I agree, the park looked great, and to John Kennedy and his staff, they did a great job. The police were really out there doing a great job. I don't think we had any issues or problems. I really thoroughly enjoyed it. It was a wonderful event. And I noticed the World War I, well, actually, and prior memorial, some of the, it appears that some of the plates of the names have now been refurbished. Is that, yeah? And really, I mean, they are absolutely gorgeous, and I just really am thrilled to see us restoring and taking care of a monument that is such a huge part of the park and of Bloomington. And if I'm understanding, I had a question about the Vietnam Memorial, since I've been working with Stan Edmonds and John and others on this, the Vietnam Memorial. I understand that the bids are under what you would need to move forward. So is that the plan, to simply move forward with the re-etching of the names and the repair of the flame?
Yes, and I've given John Kennedy the, you know, the okay to move forward with that. In fact, John, do you just want to mention, is there, you know, the time schedule on getting that completed?
Yes, the, there's two pieces to this project. The re-highlighting the names on the plaque should happen within the next four to six weeks, and we're still waiting to hear back from the lowest bid on a timeline for recreating the sculptured flame. But at least the plaque should be done in the next four to six weeks.
And when you talk about the tablets, what, you mean on the actual, the actual names will be etched a little deeper so they don't...
They will be, they'll be highlighted, they'll be painted. If you etch them deeper, what will happen is that'll create a greater shadow, and the shadow will make the names even harder to read. So they're going to paint them with a white, with a white highlighting paint to make the names easier to read.
names easier to read.
Oh, that's interesting. I hadn't, I wasn't aware of that. Maybe we, I'd like to talk to you a little bit about that, so I understand how that works. And of course, I'm sure you'll be in touch with Stan, or I will, so we can...
Terry?
I'm sorry, Terry.
Dan's Terry's brother, so, yeah, sure.
I know them both, right, Terry. So, we can, you know, maybe get the local, I know the VFW is interested, some of the other organizations, would that, would that be, yeah?
Terry has made comments that he wants to be aware when it starts, so we'll definitely make that happen.
Right. And make all of the organizations, you know, the Legion, whatever, aware, so that people can, you know, come out and appreciate this whole thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks.
If I could, real quickly, Scott Sproles and his staff was able to make duplicate DVDs from the fireworks this, from this past week, that we had Scott Harrison, the son of Judy Markowitz, former mayor Judy Markowitz, came and offered his services to take video and photographs, so I've got DVDs for everybody.
Thank you very much. Alderman Lauer?
Yes. Hey, thanks very much as well, and I'd like to thank and echo both the mayor and Judy Sterns on their compliments to the staff, but I also want to compliment my neighborhood, South Hill, as a host for the Fourth of July.